We've called to order this special meeting of the Navasota City Council at 3:30?
4:30.
31 PM at Navasota City Hall. And, uh, you and Mark's district.
No, sir.
Item three is we're gonna conduct a workshop on existing manufactured home regulations. Mr. Lupe.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. Lupe D'Elstato, Development Services. Just gonna give a brief background on this item. So, over the last several months, City Council has received citizen remarks at the beginning of various meetings about the current adopted manufactured home regulations and ordinance. So, City Council asked staff to present the current regulations in a workshop setting to be able to discuss the current regulations related to manufactured homes. And so, staff, we put together a PowerPoint presentation that's really highlighting the big points of the current ordinance, and if y'all have any questions about those, and obviously, open for discussion. So, let me pull that up here. Okay, so, the, so, the big thing is, is of course, is what is a manufactured home? There's a lot of, there's a lot of confusion because they're all named very similar. So, you have manufactured homes, mobile homes, and modular homes. I wish they would've come up with like a different first letter for each, but unfortunately, it doesn't, it doesn't make our job easier, but, but it's okay. We'll, we'll, we take time to explain it. So, a manufactured home, they're basically the, it's really a standard. So, after June 15, 1976, the federal government implemented a base minimum, right, setting? If you're gonna build a manufactured home, which we all kinda think of as a mobile home, you have to build them to at least X quality, right? With, with, with these items, these, these construction materials. Before June 5, 1976, it was the wild, wild west. You could, there was a lot of companies out there making them, and they're all considered mobile homes, and, you know, you see them if you drive around. Not really so much so here in town anymore, but there's a lot of different shapes and varieties. But that's really the big difference between a mobile home and a manufactured home is just the codes. After 1976, federal government said, here's the new base minimum to build one, and then, like I said before, it was kinda open. And our ordinance, our current ordinance that we have in place defines both. So, it's very clear, and it's very good definitions for both.
So, which one is which?
So, mobile homes.
Mobile homes before 76?
Yep. Mobile homes are before 76. Manufactured homes are...
That's your goal of manufactured homes?
Correct. Yep, yep. And they were, they were now classified as manufactured homes after 1976. So, that's really the key.
So, there's no new mobile homes being built? It's all manufactured?
No, sir. That's correct. Yep, yep. Although 99% of the public refers to all of them as mobile homes. Like I said, it just makes it a little confusing. And so, and so, the third option that, that is also mentioned quite a bit is a modular home. These really don't even fall in the same category. It's just that a lot of times, they look very similar on the, on the, on the outside, but a modular home is actually built to the same standard as a site-built home. They come in many shapes and sizes. Matter of fact, in the picture, in the PowerPoint presentation, you can see that this modular home is being placed on a raised slab foundation, and you can see the underside of that home. It has all the same codes, requirements, you know, all, all of the nitty-gritty code and details that cities adopt, it has to meet those same requirements. So, for whatever reason, I think it's mainly for transportation, since these are built in a factory and brought to a site. I think by the nature of them having to go on a public highway, they have to make them narrow to get DOT approvals, and so, that's why a lot of those, a lot of these homes resemble manufactured homes in a sense, but, but they're built completely different, and they're, once they're on the ground, they're actually assessed as real property because it cannot be moved. Versus manufactured and mobile homes, you know, you put wheels on them and you can move them out of town.
But the main thing is, is that a modular home is to the specifications of a brick veneer or a wood-framed
Mm-hmm.
...site-built home on a slab?
Yes. Now, there doesn't have to be on a slab, you know, some can be pier and beam, just like a pier and beam home, but the big difference is...
Well, yes, okay.
Yeah, the big difference is manufactured homes are to federal HUD minimums, and modular homes are to international building codes, which is what most cities, including Navasota, have adopted. So, if you're gonna build a new home, a modular home and a site-built home have to meet the same requirements, same inspections, same permits.
Uh, Lupe, you said that when a modular home was placed, it cannot be moved?
Uh, no, sir. No. Those are permanent. They're permanently placed on the property. I mean, I guess you could move them.
It could be moved, it could be moved the same as a...
As a pier and beam.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like if somebody buys a whole... But it doesn't have the undercarriage and everything to just hook it up and move it out?
Right. Correct. Yeah, I guess everything could be moved, right? For the right amount of cost, but, but these generally are built in a very permanent manner.
They're not, they're not meant to be...
Not built on axles.
Right. Correct. Correct. I broke my, uh, paper. Can you go to the, oh, there it goes. It caught up. Uh, and so, again, just to highlight from a, a very high level, the current manufactured home ordinance for Navasota was adopted November 10, 2008. Uh, just some quick facts. Installation and replacement of manufactured homes are allowed, meaning those that were in place when the ordinance was adopted, uh, one time, um, with a newer model. You can also install and replace manufactured homes continuously within two approved manufactured home parks, which one is on Sunset, and the other is right off of Brozak Avenue. Those are the only two official parks where you could, you know, replace them indefinitely. And manufactured homes and mobile homes did become prohibited at that time on vacant lots. And if somebody did wanna establish a manufactured home park, there's three zoning areas that, that are conditional uses. So, if someone had land and they wanted to develop a park similar to Sunset or Brozak, they would need to be in those three zoning areas. And my clicker's moving by itself, so, it's kinda going at my pace, so it's keeping up. And then, those are the three zoning areas, which is B1, R3, and M1. And, uh, let's see here. So, just for the purpose of this discussion, it is not a scientific process that we did this, but we used latest imagery, satellite imagery, just to see where most of the existing manufactured homes and mobile homes are in the city. There's approximately 300, plus or minus. There's some areas that we highlighted that includes the entire property, but there's multiple homes on, on that property. So, for instance, one example is by the railroad tracks, right by the new Fuquay construction area. That's only shown as one, but there's actually maybe eight or nine manufactured and mobile homes there. Same thing on Grimes Street by the hospital. It, it just shows up as one, but there's actually eight or nine there, too. Maybe even 12. But generally, you can see the, the areas where existing manufactured and mobile homes are, and like I said, those are approximately 300 or so, plus or minus. In the same fashion we did with satellite imagery, we also did a rough, um, a rough survey of vacant lots in the city, and that was a roughly 385, plus or minus, maybe around 400 vacant lots. And so, um, just for, just for discussion purposes, since we're talking about manufactured homes and mobile homes not being allowed on, on vacant lots, so there's, there's a good spread of those throughout the city. There's still quite a bit of infill to do. And I think that was, that was, that was the big highlights. If y'all have any questions on anything in particular. Uh, one of the things that we didn't touch on here that, that staff does, or that is in the ordinance, is if, if a manufactured home, primarily a mobile home, if it goes without utilities for 90 days or more, then, there are some instances where there's some discretion if someone goes on vacation, right, and, and they wanna turn their utilities off for an extended amount of time. But generally, the ordinance is pretty clear that if you go more than 90 days without utilities, then you can lose your grandfathered status, and you'll never be able to connect it again, um, to utilities. And so, the only option would be to remove it and put in a modular home or a site-built home. But those cases are far and few between. We, we generally don't see those. Most, most of the manufactured homes and mobile homes in the city, they stay connected to utilities pretty consistently, so, uh, that really hasn't happened very often, so...
So, in Sunset, there are 50-ish lots left available?
So, Sunset, I think there's a total of 50, um, but there is only a le, there are 62 total. There's 11 vacant spots.
11 vacant, okay.
Yes, 11 vacant. Brozak Park is fully, it's, it's filled up.
Right. Now, if I was right, the mobile homes are out?
Yes.
There, there can be no more, even, even in the authorized lots and everything?
Yes, yeah.
They're not allowed in? But they were built before 76, so that's a few years on them. If you have a manufactured home, it can be replaced?
One time.
One time, but it has to be a newer model and a larger model?
A newer model than the one that you're getting rid of?
That's true.
And one of general, similar size. It doesn't necessarily have to be larger. Yep.
Right. Uh, there's a, what the, the differences between manufactured home and the modular They're treated differently by the banks. I think that there's a matter of depreciation, that the modular home does not depreciate because it's considered as real property, you say, whereas the manufactured home, I gotta get terminology, the manufactured home, uh, is treated like a car more than anything. It depreciates, and so, your financing is different on the things?
Correct, yeah. I did, I did speak to someone at the appraisal district, and, and they did mention that generally, uh, it depends on how, on how the, the title is financed, uh, but generally, most, most people that buy a, a new manufactured home, it's gonna be, um, it's gonna be appraised as personal property versus a modular home would be real property. But, but that can fluctuate. Really, it depends on how many times it changes hands. From what, from what the person at the appraisal district told me is, uh, generally, on the first go, when someone first buys one, it's always generally personal property based on the title. But then, let's say that the next person comes around and, and the second buyer's gonna buy it from that particular person that bought, um, then they lump it together and as, and it changes to real property. So, it's, it's a bit confusing, but, but generally, yes, most, most of the new manufactured homes, when you replace them, you're gonna get a personal property on the appraisal district.
So, that, that gets treated as differently, mainly through the depreciation, but...
Mayor and Council, I also think it makes a difference who owns the dirt, who owns the real property underneath the, the manufactured home, so sometimes I think you can get it affixed to real property and taxed as real property, but typically, when somebody is purchasing a manufactured home, they're gonna be in a manufactured home park, and they're not gonna own the underlying, um, real estate. So, that's definitely gonna be appraised and taxed as personal property. So, I think that's part of the evaluation that goes into the appraisal district's, you know, analysis.
The evaluation has to be based on some kind of fact that, that creates a difference between these two. If you look at it, if you look at the, the example that was given to us, a modular home going in up on Wilson Street.
Oh, yes.
If you go up there and look at it, it doesn't look much different from some of the manufactured homes. I wanna call them trailer houses, but the manufactured homes over at Sunset.
Mm-hmm.
And so, it's very difficult to, to get your mind around what this, why are they treated differently?
Mm-hmm.
And they are treated differently, like I said, by the banks and, and everything else. And, and the issue comes up is, is it that you can get them quicker? Of course, you can buy a used manufactured home, whereas if you buy a used modular home, you're having to buy it on-site generally.
Right, right. Yeah, I think most of that is the, is the undercarriage and the foundation. The one on, the one on Wilson, we, we received quite a bit of calls about people confused, saying, hey, did the city change the rules? Is manufactured homes allowed now? But, I mean, that modular home looks very similar to a, a manufactured home, but, but that beneath the skirting that was, that was installed around it, I mean, it's a complete concrete, uh, footers, I mean, just how you would see a...
It's like a pier and beam.
A pier and beam home. Yep, yep. It's just the shape. The shapes are, I mean, identical, really.
So, the, uh, the way that it was built is the same, like the 2x4s?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Now, the question comes up, and I guess this gets into portable housing and everything Why are we more restrictive on the manufactured homes? And I, I think that we were trying to encourage people to go into a more permanent situation on that thing. What is the difference in cost between a manufactured home and a, and agreeing that, that you're talking about new and, and not a 10-year-old?
Right. Uh, so, I did talk to a, a manufactured home dealer at a Bryan Call station area. Generally, it's anywhere from 20 to 30,000 dollar difference between a manufactured home and a modular home. And kinda what's, uh, what's interesting is, uh, these companies, they'll have the same model, same floor plan, and you get to pick if you want a manufactured version or a modular home version, which one meets international building code, is what the cities adopt, and the other, of course, meets HUD code. But the difference is that foundation, right, that foundation's gonna cost a little bit more money. Uh, the structural beams, 2x4s, 2x6s, whatever's used in the international code, bigger windows. So, that difference makes up about 20 to 30,000 dollars. So, if you go and you pick your, you pick your floor plan and you say, hey, well, you know, I'm gonna do a mo, a modular versus a manufactured, it's about a $20,000 difference. Now, the, the model can depend, right? Some, some are, some start at 80, and some go all the way up to 2, you know, 220, 240. Just depends, I know the double wides are a lot more expensive. So, it really just depends on, um, your floor plan that you want, but generally, it's about 20 to 30,000 dollar difference.
So, what if someone owned their own property? They went in and they picked the, the manufactured home that was up to international building standards because there's options to go up?
Mm-hmm.
And, and they had it installed, minus the wheels, pier'd and beamed?
Oh, well, that theoretically, that wouldn't happen, just because a manufactured home could never meet the standards of international. They would have to opt out for the modular.
There is no option.
Yeah, they would have to, they would have to opt out for, they would have to opt for the modular version. And there's actually, even in the serial numbers, um, all the ma, all the modular homes actually have a serial number, and it starts with MOD. Then that kinda gives us a flag when we're looking at the plans that, and there's also a lot of notation, and I know Nick can probably go into the details of all that, but, but there, but there is a big difference.
Now, I think specifically for, for people that don't understand, that the primary job of city government is to protect you from your neighbor, and protecting your property values is one of those. And so, if you build a $500,000 home, you are doing so under the guise that the city isn't going to let a slum house, and I'm not calling modular homes slum houses because I've lived in them, but you're not gonna let something depreciate your property value next door, correct? That's the whole reason that we have building standards within the city limits.
Are manufactured homes, do all manufactured homes have to be tied down? Anchored?
Ooh, Nick? I'm gonna punt that to Nick.
Because I know mobile homes had to be tied down.
I believe so.
That's...
So, to answer the, oh, Nick Koski?
Yeah.
Building official, City of Navasota. So, um, one of the unique characteristic differences between a manufactured and a modular is a manufactured home has I-beams underneath it, those big metal beams that we always see. And then, of course, the chassis is wheels, tires, and it's got a tongue, and you can tow it. With a modular, it's actually just like your new construction, but of course, it's pre-built off-site. It will come with your floor joists, which are the wooden 2x6s, 2x8s, whatever it consists of underneath the belly of the structure. And then, the foundation can be slab foundation, as Lupe said, it can be pier and beam. It looks similar. It's very confusing, as Lupe said. If, if, you can look at it and say, oh, that's a, that's 100% a, you know, manufactured home. No, it's actually got, as Lupe said, bigger windows for egress to meet the IRC standards. It's, it's got a ton of different things inside of that structure to meet the, I guess you could say, the more stringent codes that are required in what we've adopted here in Navasota. So, um...
Like tighter distance between studs?
Absolutely.
Things like that?
Absolutely. 100%. It will meet the same standards as a single-family stick-built home that we see everywhere else. Now, don't get me wrong, you look at it, it's real narrow, it's slender, and you say, uh-oh, that's a, that's a manufactured home. Well, no, it's actually, and the cereal plate on it actually has an MOD like what Lupe told us about, um, and, uh, it comes with actually structural, engineered, stamped drawings, everything to go with it. So, it is definitely a different, uh, different characteristic, 100%.
And again, it's to bring it to the standard that 90-plus percent of other homes are built?
Yep, because we get more and more restrictive as we move forward for energy efficiency, everything. So, if you had a 1976 manufactured home and you had a 2024, there's gonna be a ton of differences on energy, the envelope, tighter windows, everything. There's, there's one, there's a lot of, lot of different things that go into it.
So, basically, even though it might cost you 20 to 30,000 dollars more, it's a much better product?
Absolutely. Just energy efficiency alone, you got that 76 with the single pane windows in it, and you're trying to climate control it, it's gonna eat you alive on the electric bill. And then, you've got your newer 2024, insulation has been, you know, bumped up in the walls, you're, you've got a more efficient AC unit on it, you've got double-pane windows in it, all of that, that, that envelope, and it's sealed tight as a drum, just like the newer homes. You're gonna, you're gonna cut your bill in half probably on that, as long as you don't keep it a meat locker inside there.
Now, does a modular come in a certain width that it can be what they goes to call a double wide?
I've seen a triple wide modular before.
Okay.
And...
So, they do piece them, um...
Oh, yes. They come in sectional, like the, yeah, so...
Like modules? Well, hello? Yeah. There you go.
That's it.
They'll do.
The biggest that I've seen is a triple wide, and the cost was about 295,000 for it. And it actually had stone facing and everything on the exterior.
Modular is really the, the standard and the, and the method of building it off-site?
Absolutely, yeah. It's, it's basically built to the IRC standards off-site, brought in like a portable building, that's a good way of putting it, like a portable building. It meets the IRC for framing. They drop it on the engineered foundation, bolt it, strap it down, and actually, some of the foundations actually will have anchor bolts on them, that they'll actually bolt it just like a single-family home. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I would say that on the manufactured homes and everything is that we may wanna consider, uh, running it through planning and zoning commission if someone wants to place one here in town. I do agree with what Patty just said here a few minutes ago, we, we know that we don't want one on Gibb Street, but on certain parts of the town, it should be allowed. But I would say that, uh, we would run it through P&amp;Z to, uh...
Is that where the conditional use would come into play in that V1, R3, and M1?
So, the conditional uses, those are just for like a big park? So, if somebody had enough land to put...
Okay, not for a single?
No, not for a single. There's currently no mechanism for individual lot.
Okay.
What if they petitioned all their neighbors and asked their neighbors whether or not it would be a hindrance to their property value if they decided to do so because they owned the property?
Um, yeah, there's not really a mechanism for that. Uh, the, the current ordinance doesn't have that, that track to follow, so it would, it would have to be an amendment from council, basically.
Correct.
Am I understanding right, Gary?
Correct.
Changing orders.
It's a zoning issue, and so, unless the zoning were changed to allow single lot placement, then it can't be done. Um, you know, the council wouldn't have the discretion to do that if you wanted to allow cer, you know, single lot placement in certain areas of town, but it would require a change to the zoning ordinance. Right now, it's just not, it's just not allowed. Um, you know, that's the direction staff received, you know, years ago when it was, when the ordinance was amended, but, um, you know, that can be, that can be changed by the city council. So, that would be one way of approach, yeah. But it would have to be changed. Lupe is correct.
Again, we would be, we would be lowering our standards, though, by doing that.
Correct.
In essence, yes. I mean, the, the, the single, the vacant lots that you would attempt to fill with manufactured homes, HUD standards are lower than IRC. Correct.
But if, I know that some of the lots in the city, you can't put anything on there but a manufactured home. You can't build anything. Is that true?
Uh, I think our most narrow lots are probably 50-footers, and those are on the historic, like when, you know, the, those subdivisions were platted long, long time ago. Uh, but even on a 50-footer, uh, council passed an amendment a few years ago, maybe two years ago, um, that specifically addressed that situation where we did have areas of town where you had 50-foot lots, the side setbacks were 15, that would only leave you with the 20-foot area to build. Well, that's almost the size of a manufactured home. So, council actually approved an amendment to, if your lot is 50-foot or less, uh, your side setbacks are seven feet, and it gives you 36 feet of buildable area. So, uh, that particular issue was addressed by council a few years ago. So, to encourage areas of town that have narrow lots to infill with site-built homes or modular homes.
Is that area behind, just curiosity, that area behind, um, behind, um, Chicken Express?
Mm-hmm.
Is that Durden?
Oh, yes.
Is that a park or are those?
Nope, no, those are, uh, I think, matter of fact, I think that's just an individual track, um, with multiple homes on there.
I guess they're, I guess the spaces are leased out, is that?
Yeah, I think, I think each, each unit is leased out separately. Yeah, they're not even plotted on separate lots.
But it's not considered a park?
No.
Okay.
No, sir.
That, um, well, I know I, when I graduated high school, that was my first place I say stayed at was over there. I had purchased a mobile home. It was called Denman's Trailer Park at that time, so I don't know what it's called now.
Y'all mentioned that one on Wilson Street, um.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of cemetery.
Yeah, what's the square footage on that one or approximately, what's the size of it?
I think it's like 1,500, 1,400?
Was it two or three sections? Two, I guess?
It was just the one section.
Oh, just the one? Oh, okay, so. I just hadn't had a chance to look at it.
And, and it was on wheels, right?
No.
No.
Yeah, it shows a picture of it here, yeah. There you go. Like that.
Oh, that's it?
Not that one, but very similar, very similar.
Okay. But they, there is a, a modular version of a single-wide that's six, basically 16, maybe 18 feet wide, 16 feet wide, something like that.
That sounds so confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I used to sell mobile homes when I was very, very young. My grandfather had a, had a, uh, a sales lot here. Those were definitely trailer houses. Those were, those were, uh, those were mobile homes.
10 by 50?
No, they were up to eight, about 16, they go up to 16, mainly 14 feet was kind of the standard width. And it, yes, I lived in one first period of time as well.
I lived in several.
Just in the past, I don't know, let's say six months, what type of activities as far as, uh, requests have, have been brought to you with a proposed manufactured home or something like that?
You know, with, uh, with manufactured homes, it's probably, it's probably less than a handful per month, uh, just phone calls. Generally, it's just phone calls of, hey, is, does the city allow manufactured homes? They're not really specific to a lot. It's mainly just general questions. Uh, every now and then, we will get a few, um, that, that have a question about a lot they own in town. Um, but, but it's not, it's not a lot. I'd say a handful a month, if that.
But here lately, we just only had a module home, just the one on Wilson Street.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, yearly, uh, the, the manufactured homes and mobile homes that were, that were already in place when the ordinance was adopted in 2008, generally, we see about three to four replacements of those a year with a newer model. Um, so it's, even those replacements are not, are not that frequent.
We're not gonna take any action on this, are we?
No, this is just a workshop.
Okay.
Yeah. Just information gathering. And discussion. See fit.
I understand the need for the ordinance and, and all of that. I also understand the need of some people to be able to have something more affordable than a site-built home, and they're expensive. We all know that. And, and I understand there are adjustments in ordinances that can be made, not for manufactured homes, but for a smaller home, as long as you're exceeding 750 square feet.
True. Yep.
So the suggestion at that point would be to do tiny. Or.
Tinyer. Yeah, 750 is, is a.
Is the minimum.
Is the minimum, which is, is not that, it's not that big.
No, it's not. It's bigger than a hotel room, but not much.
Right.
Do you know what the smallest modular square feet would be? I mean, I'm just. I, you may not know.
It'd be probably a two, 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 that's too bad.
Like a thousand?
Probably about 1,200.
Seven, yeah.
Approximately.
Uh, Lupe, uh, I don't wanna put you on the spot here, but, uh, for, for the mobile homes that we have here in the city and, and, and they're placed on lots. Are they grown lots or are they owned?
Oof, that's a, that's a good question. Uh, our scientific analysis of satellite imagery didn't include that questionnaire, but, um, yeah, I, I don't, I don't have the, the data on that to see.
You probably have to look those up.
Yeah. We could, we could do that and see if, if the ownership of that real property or personal property matches the land. Um, but it probably varies. Yeah, I, um, maybe 50/50, I'm not sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't even say that, just cause I would need to go back and look.
The one up behind the Little League fields is, uh, one owner for, what, six?
Yeah, I think there's like, I think there's eight or nine there. Um, yeah, and that's, yeah, right off of Grime Street, so that's.
The old convulsion home was.
And I think in that situation, it's even the, the owner of the land also owns most of the mobile homes and manufactured homes on the property, too. Um, they, they're just leased out individually, uh, to tenants. Um, I think the one off of, uh, Lee Street, where Lee and Malcolm, Malcolm turns to Lee, uh, I think that particular park, uh, it's owned by one person, and then everyone owns their own mobile home. So it's just sporadic throughout town, uh, where you, where you see those clusters. Um, but I think it probably in the instances where you have an individual lot, an individual manufactured home or mobile home, those are probably generally more one-in-one, uh, but even then, it probably will still vary.
I know Sunset's a mixture.
Yeah, Sunset's a mixture. Uh, they, originally, it was only to lease spots. Then it changed hands, and, and that new owner, um, began to sell the lots. Um, and I think now they're back to just leasing space. So, yeah, it's, it's a mixture, even in those approved parks.
If you think there's enough, enough interest in it, we can turn it over to the, uh, planning and zoning and have them look at it, at their opinion, if situation has changed.
I think there's a need, uh, I know the mayor said we may be lower in outstanding, but I'm, I'm kinda disagree with that one. I'd, uh, I, I, I know that, uh, Patty said it again, and then I'm, I'm echoing off of her again, is that certain parts of town, no, we don't need a manufactured home again. But other parts that is already low income, I'm gonna say yes. That's my feeling as well with that. I think that, and that's the reason I said that, um, uh, we should let P and Z take a, uh, take a look at it and, uh, let them be the, uh, deciding factor of that because, uh, I, I think all of them on there is a real good sign amount of people.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that. Uh, yeah, obviously, I have to consider neighbors.
Yeah.
You know, um, especially someone like with the Wilson Street has, has, has done it the way it's required, you know?
Looks nice.
Yeah. So.
Uh, is that something you think is feasible, Gary, or?
To charge P and Z with take, evaluating the issue and making a recommendation to city council?
Yeah, yes.
You bet, yeah.
To their fore.
Yeah, exactly. That's what they're there for. If you wanna charge them with, um, taking a look at the issue, evaluating the options, and, and coming back to council with a recommendation, they can sure do that. Um, and if, if that's the consensus, there's no action tonight, but if that's the consensus of council, I'm sure that staff can, um, start that process.
Yes, sir.
Good.
All right.
That's it.
Thank y'all.
Item four, connect the workshop to rain barrel collection systems.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Nick Koski, building official, city of Navasota. Just a brief moment, we're gonna load it.
Yeah.
Hey, Lupe?
There's a, um, down low? Yes. It's in the open.
Oh. There we go. Now we're rolling. So I've just got a, uh, brief rain barrel collection presentation for you. So overview on rain barrels. How do they work? What are the benefits? The installation, items to consider, and the maintenance factor, that wonderful thing that we always love in life of maintenance of things. So how do they work? Well, it's pretty simple. Mother Nature provides us with the quality H2O, I guess you could say. It falls from the sky. Collects on the roof. Uh, you have your gutter that would, of course, take that collection of rainwater, transpose it into the downspout that you can see in the second photo there. Then it would then distribute it into the rain barrel. However, there's many different designs. This one here is just kind of like 55-gallon drum look, and it turned deposits of the rainwater in there. Then, of course, you take that rainwater and you make beautiful things like what you see in the pot right there, or water in your lawn, or whatever kind of, uh, whatever, your flavor, I guess you could say on that. The benefits, free water. That sounds like a great thing. We would all love free, that first word, free. Reduction in storm water runoff. So we're putting in the barrel, we're not distributing it in the street, in the neighbor's yard, however you wanna put it. You can put it in the barrel and use it for later use. Decrease in flooding problems, detention ponds, anything of that nature where all of that is gonna run down the road, going to the storm drain. From the storm drain, it's gonna go into your ponds, and of course, collect. One thing about the rainwater, improved water quality. It's naturally soft from nature. You don't have to treat it. It's naturally pure from, I guess you could say, the sky itself. Installation. So when you install your rain barrel, you wanna elevate it at least about two foot off the ground. The higher, the better, but you don't wanna, of course, elevate it too high because then it becomes a danger. Could fall over, and at 8.34 pounds per gallon, we can kinda do the math, 100 gallons would be 800-plus gallons. So in turn, that's a lot of weight. So two foot is a good, kinda safe distance. You can put it on cinder blocks, patio blocks, your flavor again. And, uh, then you can attach a hose, or you can have a watering can. Your flavor again, just kinda attach the hose, water your plants, water your yard, put it to watering can, distribute it to further areas that you wanna utilize it for. And I already talked about placing on a little surface. You don't wanna put it on one little brick and the thing's just tipping back and forth, and your, and little Timmy comes by and knocks it over. We don't want that to happen. So a level surface, landscape blocks, or some kind of platform would be great. One of the biggest things that's, that's a concern slash you should have is to install your screen in the top inlet side. So basically, the water that's coming in, you wanna have a screen to catch any debris, bugs. We all know that there's tons of different things out there that you get in that barrel. So you kinda want a little screen to filter those out. So that way, it's, you know, a little better water in there. Items to consider. You can put a soaker hose on it, put it around your foundation. Turn it on, you know, when the dry months come, you can try and saturate around your foundation, as we all know, to try and get a little swelling of the soil, so that way you don't have any foundation issues, and so on and so forth. One of the biggest things, too, is to overflow and redirect the water when the barrel's full. As you can see in the second photo there, there's that little green hose with that little 90 fitting on it. What that's for is, once that barrel fills up, it'll then distribute from there wherever you'd like it to collect. So that way, it's not dumping over to the neighbor or causing any kind of issues next to your foundation or your home. You don't want it overflowing and running on the side of the home, causing any kind of rock issues or saturation of your house more than it needs. And of course, aesthetics. You can, have the kids paint it. You can put smiley faces on it, or flowers, or preferably not the TNT barrelware that you see that looks like, you know, a bomb or something like that. We don't want anything of that nature.
I actually like that. Those names, no, I praise you.
Love it. That's great. Maintenance, that's the part that we're talking about, the maintenance in life of things. So you wanna clean the gutter and downspouts regularly to prevent clogging. So of course, if you have all that debris that you see in that left-hand photo, you ain't gonna get any water. If anything, you'll get more debris in the barrel or overflow from the gutter. Drain before any freeze. As we all know, we get those 17 snaps once in a while, and it will freeze the barrel. Barrel's plastic, barrel will get a crack. That will be the end of the life of the barrel. And we talked about that inlet screen for bugs, debris, all of that. You wanna check it regularly to prevent damage from, as you can see that little pesky squirrel in that third photo from the left over to the right. Those little pesky squirrels, they'll get in there, they'll look for that water or any kind of animal, and they'll tear the screen up, and then, of course, well, now we got mosquitoes going in there. They're gonna breed, they're gonna have, of course. They're gonna breed, they're gonna have, of course, mosquitoes, West Nile, we don't want those issues. So a lot of maintenance on the screens, lots of cleaning, lots of those issues. And then, of course, empty if not being used. So if you're not using it, of course, move it away from the gutter, cap it off, those types of things. Because what will happen is if you're not using it, you're gonna get stagnant water in. And that stagnant water has no chlorine, residual, nothing, again, it's pure from nature. But as we all know, that muddy puddle that sits there becomes stagnant, stinky nuisance odors. And that could be a possibility of that barrel becoming stagnant. You get those smells and then dumping it over and then the neighbor gets upset next door to you. So that's one thing to definitely consider, to regularly use, again, that maintenance side. Got to use the water as you receive it. And like I said, it was short. Questions?
I would just like to tell everyone how faithful I am to living in a state where you can legally collect rainwater.
There are two benefits to this. One of them, of course, is collecting the water and having free water. And the amount of water that's staggering, fluctuations are in this area. If you have a 2,000 square feet rooftop area, one each rain will give you 1,000 gallons of water. So that's not quite non-practical, because you're not gonna have a container for that. One of the other problems in addition, or one of the other benefits, in addition to having the free water, is that when we get some of these gully washers, if we can siphon off some of it and do something else with it, other than just have it run down the gutter and into the storm system, we solve some of our, or at least ameliorate, some of our flooding problems. I think there's definitely a benefit to it. I had asked if it'd blow up. And one of the questions is, how do you go back and build these? And the question in my mind is, do you make this a requirement? Should we make this a requirement for the new houses being built? I hate to go back and tell everybody that I have to do this. I think telling them what it is, then it's a good idea. But the cost of putting in one of these rain barrels, just on a retail basis, would probably less than a hundred dollars for a 35 gallon drum. If we were to require the new, the new construction, they put in one of these, the question becomes what size and what size area? You have to have gutters in order to collect the rainwater. And I understand that they don't have gutters on all of the new houses that we've been built. But you wouldn't have to corral the whole rooftop, it'd just be a smaller area. Because one of the problems, you would have to balance the storage. So I just want to throw it out, just to open discussion on whether or not you would think it would be a good idea to require this in the construction.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, probably won't require it, might encourage it in some way.
I did reach out to multiple builders, new developers here, just to get their flavor on it, kind of, their vibes. Kind of told them about just like a 55 gallon drum, what their feelings were about putting a short section of gutter on the back of the property, or back of the home, I apologize. And for collection and possibly implementing in, I can tell you, the few that I talked to, they were not a fan of it. They just, they didn't want to have to deal with the engineering side of it, kind of like the liability, I guess you could say, of having to implement that in. And we talked about little Timmy and those types of, you know, liabilities. That's what they were worried about, having it mandatory.
Well, not everybody's gonna maintain it.
And that's, absolutely, that's why I was talking about the stagnant water, you know, the neighbor, possible.
And I mean, I don't know that everybody would want that as a aesthetic part of their home, whether it's in the front or back. It's kind of like, I have rain, put my trash can in my garage so it doesn't sit out front. I prefer it not being visible. But that's just.
Well, these don't have to be 55 gallon drums. They had some in Sam's Club a couple of years ago, the type thing, which are like big Mexican turmures or whatever it is. Big terracotta thing that honors downs or something like that. They can be very nice, they can be part of the deck, yeah.
Actually, if you look in the slide in the bottom right hand, of course, you could even put Napa Soda on it. But you can see that their collection is like a bunch of, and actually, there is one here in Napa Sota. I did see it at a residence.
On the other street.
Yes. And it's got the same little collection system, just like that, with the little individual cups.
It has just the water that way, it has just a little drop better than just.
It's part of the.
Correct. So I actually did see that, so there is one that is in play, identical, but it doesn't say Napa Sota front, but it is identical.
Yeah, and that chain makes the water kind of go straight down instead of.
Yeah.
I think the people that want them more, they would not agree that the government needs to dictate that they be forced to have them though.
Yeah, because again, for part of, for the liability, partly for the maintenance. Not everybody's gonna, they're unable to maintain.
That's really, I think, about requiring it on new houses, type thing. That way, it's out of the hands of the homeowner, type thing. It's not a matter of saying I don't want it.
It's still being dictated though.
Well, it's not, yes, yes it is, it's have to have it, and no, it's not. If you have to use it. You're not talking about, you know, we're talking about $250,000 for the house. An extra hundred, $200,000 is not gonna break anybody.
No, I mean, like, there's homeowners that, they're not gonna want to deal with it.
Well, there are people that buy houses with the garage and reuse the garage.
True.
One of the concerns here is that the water is going to be in short supply in the near future. And so this is just trying to get ahead of the problem. Because we're gonna be in a situation of reusing the water, going to gray water, there's a difference.
I think it's kind of like recycling, you know?
The people that are gonna do it, do it.
It's a good recycling, yeah. It's somewhat like that, you know? If that's something you want to do or able, you do it.
I mean, there's cities that, not in America, well, I mean, they make it like in New Jersey and New York, where there are issues with ground and not having the saturation to refill and all that. And where they require on the rooftops of all of the buildings, some sort of collection system that the water that's collected to do the watering for the city, to do those sort of things. And it keeps it from going to the flood system. I mean, that I can understand, that's a widespread collection system that works for the benefit. And there's some states that don't even allow you to collect anymore, because it keeps it from going back into the water table. And why we don't have that problem here.
Hey, I remember Nueva has no natural water, everything there is.
Corrected, yeah.
Or desolidization now.
I wouldn't need for there to be any requirement. I think that would be something up until the homeowner, that would decide whether they would want to do that. I think the city's got a package or something that someone comes, want to build a home here that, you know, they encourage them to do that.
We could maybe provide, you know, some guidelines or specs or something, you know? Give them, encourage and give them the option.
Well, there are cities in Texas that encourage this, I don't know of any that require it. And my intention is not to require everybody to have it, but just to require it to be available in the new construction.
And that encourage sounds good.
Encourage, even incentives, I mean, I understand that, but not required.
What kind of incentive would you?
I don't know.
Well, they're gonna lower the water bill. That could be incentive enough, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you would lower their water bill. If they, you know, if they collected enough rainwater, I mean, you could have sister under your house, you're gonna collect enough rainwater to water your yard through the whole summer. If you caught all the rain that your dad, it's about two months.
Something I need to think about personally, because my backyard floods from the Little League field. Although I don't know if the barrel big enough.
But you do have to have a system in.
It would have to be.
It's just a really big thing here.
Yeah, it'd be pretty, pretty big.
Really big thing.
Like my own little water tower. And how do we get it elevated, I don't know, but anyway. And like you say, you did talk to some builders who.
Yes, and actually, I'm familiar with other cities, I won't name what cities, but they had had programs, just like, you know, where incentives and all that kind of stuff. They are, they was real short-lived, I'll just say that, you know? There was a little bit of response. And I think it's, the biggest thing with the rain barrels is upkeep. If you upkeep and you maintain it, it's an excellent thing, it's beautiful. But if you don't put, I guess you could say, the love into it, it's gonna.
And then the ones that do it, we could get testimonies of them, share those testimonies, like, or something. They actually work for me, you know?
The Goston Bay area has a, well, the Goston Bay Foundation hosts numerous rain barrel workshops throughout that region, and they always have a lot of interest. So even just encouraging it through different organizations or hosting workshops, and partnering with the library, doing some educational outreach to encourage it.
To its livelihood, you know, every little bit helps toward the ultimate goal of conservation or environment.
If the city detects the leak, put some rain barrels out, start catching the water that comes off the street.
Yes, good idea.
Water off the street is not, you don't want to do that. No, see, the.
I said the roof, this roof. There's a lot of roof.
Yeah, there's a lot of it. Lot of gutter.
Lot of barrels.
Lot of baskets of water outside.
Lot of maintenance.
Yeah, there's a lot of maintenance.
She don't know comment on that one. Okay, well, we will turn to the workshops.
Thank you.
Thank you.